I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the open meeting of the Seward Nebraska County Board. The city has certified for the Nebraska Goldenees Act of compacting vehicles. Copy of the Nebraska Goldenees Act is displayed on the back wall by the door as required. Disclosure of your recording process is also supposed to be in the meeting room. A participant's sign sheet is available for you, many citizen addressing the council. You shall raise your hand until you're acknowledged and then you will have five minutes to speak. And please direct all comments, state your name and address for clerk's record and then direct all comments to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response should be made. The city of Seward deserves the right to adjust order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on the need to add to list it. Please call the board.
Beck?
Here.
Hendrick?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman?
Here.
Here.
First item we have is a draft minutes, September first, 2020. Sorry. Motion in a second, in discussion. Sign on. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Welcome.
Next we have the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second, in discussion. After the consent.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Please call the roll.
How was the second? Schmidt? Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Allen?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Before we go on to our material items, Assistant Chief Peters is here. We'd like to introduce to our newest officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. Just want to take a quick moment here to introduce you to our two newest officers with Seward Police Department. I'd like to introduce Lacy Samick. Lacy comes to us with six years' experience, most recently in Central City. And Officer Russ Frazee, who comes to us from the Seward County Sheriff's Office. And Russ has about nine years' experience. So, we're very lucky to have them and to be able to bring them on board.
Welcome. You're welcome to stay unless you have more pressing matters.
We buy it.
Well, welcome. Thank you. The first material item we have is application of Elizabeth Snyder as manager of Veterans VFW. Or Veterans F- is that VFW?
Yeah.
VFW, class C liquor license. Fine?
They've submitted an application to change their manager, Elizabeth Snyder, and we don't have any objection.
Any questions or comments from the council? Anything in motion? To approve? Who do?
Second.
Motion in a second, in for discussion. Sign on. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Next, we have Zayn is here to present the Seward Countywide Housing Study. Welcome, Zayn.
Thank you. Just in all, just start telling you. Yes, so Greg is handing out some, a packet of information. I have a loving letter, my presentation, and then the executive summary of the housing study, which was completed in October twenty nineteen. To get into Nebraska hats here, Seward was identified as one of the fastest growing communities in the county. I figure that's no surprise to everyone in this room. Projected pop- projected population increase is 2.6% or about, let's see here, about, sorry, about 200 and some persons. Population 2019 was about 7,261. Population 2024 would be about 7,448. Given this 2.6 population increase, the housing study identified that an estimated 242 housing units are needed to be built in the community by 2024, 16 of which should be targeted to Seward's downtown district over the next five years. Overall, the overall number includes 162 owner units. So, that's homes that are owned outright, where the occupiers, the rental units, homes that are built just for rental purposes, or homes that are built, bought by others and then used for rental purposes. Projected housing unit target demand will require an estimated 41.1 acres of land to develop and an estimated $58.7 million to develop. That is taking into account all 242 housing units. Projected unit target demand again is based on data obtained through a contribution of examination of population trends and answers provided during the housing studies, community surveys that were completed for later part of last year. Efforts to address the housing need in the community have already been undertaken. There's been a lot of new developments springing up around Seward. An average of 30 homes pop up around the community every year, which is good. But the issue stands in the need for affordable housing units for newer families, the trades, those in the trades, police officers, blue collar workers, and other young professional types and starting families. The average price of a new home in Seward range from $300,000 to $400,000, which is great. Those homes are beautiful and they sell quickly. However, the housing study did identify some needs in the $100,000 to $200,000 range. That's calculated by looking at area median income. If you look on page two of this presentation portion, you will see that some breakdowns in countywide AMI increases. Essentially, area median income is split up into three different categories. Middle to upper income levels, moderate incomes, and then lower income levels. Countywide, about 344 total housing units and the price rating of about $337 and above need to be built. In the moderate income level, 84 homes of approximately $225,000 and up need to be built. And then for the lower, extremely low income, this is your Section 8 HUD-type housing units, HUD eligible housing units. About 60 total units countywide need to be built on average price from $96,000 to $144,000. You can see a specific breakdown in the number of AMI houses that need to be built on page three in Seward specifically. The largest kind of need in Seward is between that 61 and 80% AMI. So, that's the need, that's that missing middle area median income. About 25 owner and 22 rental homes need to be built within that, that specified range to accommodate for the estimated population trend growth. Moving on, the, another need or area that needs to be kind of closely examined is the need for rehabilitation in the community. Seward's housing stock is aging. However, kind of based on a community survey that was completed as in housing conditions, housing conditions are normal or above, which is good. But the housing stock itself is rapidly aging. Majority of the existing housing stock was built prior to 19, prior to 1990. Again, we have some good houses here in Seward, but an estimated 252 homes, I apologize, 388 homes in Seward need rehabilitation at an estimated cost of $12 million. And about 24 homes in the community do need to be formally replaced due to being in substandard dilapidated conditions. There are options out there for rehabilitation programs. It's just a matter of finding the homeowners who are willing to, you know, look at rehabilitating their homes and working with them to apply for these grant programs. On page four, you can see table 20 there. That's the condition survey. As you can see, the community who participated in the condition survey identified that housing conditions in Seward are normal and above. There's a few below normal and of course, poor. And that's to be expected as, again, those 388 homes across the community were identified in rehabilitation or needed for rehabilitation. Kind of moving on to age in the county. Seward is again a growing city in the 19 and under age cohort. So, that just means there's more families living in the community. Another age cohort that's raising is the 55 and over age upward. And the study identified a need for aging in place housing. That means, you know, the next home, say someone's getting to the age where they don't want to take care of a nice four, big four-bedroom home, kids are out of the home. They want to move to something more manageable, two-bedroom duplex townhome, something like that. So, the study identified that about 242 of total units that need to be built, oh, sorry, of the 242 units need to be built countywide or communitywide. An estimated 80 units need to be targeted for that aging in place cohort. The study gave some action plans, 22 action plans that communities can look at or look to to get started or get going. Those start on page five and go down. They're separated by organizational and operational programs, housing preservation programs, housing for elderly and senior populations, and then programs for housing for families and special populations. Special population meaning HUD, Section 8-type housing, extremely low income. Starting on organizational and operational programs. Community housing partnerships are kind of the thing that stands out the most out of the action plans. Investment clubs are another potential option to address some housing need. Identifying potential developers to help increase the number of kind of that missing middle housing. And then employers' assistance housing programs, that's working with our major employers in the county, seeing what their needs are and then seeing what can be done to address those needs. Programs like that. Housing preservation programs, again, housing study did identify Seward as being the number one community in need of rehabilitation, but did identify substantial need for rehabilitation. So, that again is working with those land, those landlords to find the programs to help them kind of rehabilitate their homes. Or even kind of at the local level, creating a county housing code inspection or, you know, enforcement of housing codes so that homes are in substandard dilapidated conditions. Not saying that that's an issue in Seward, but other communities that I've given this housing presentation to, there are some concerns of code not being maintained for rental housing. And we don't, I think I can agree that living in a house with a pole in the roof is an issue for anyone. So, avoiding those possibilities are our, are our need. And again, I kind of move into the senior elderly population programs. Finding programs are designed for senior populations to build those homes are identified as. The, again, the action plans are, they're not made to be followed 1 through 22. Community can take a look at it and see what they want to do, what they want to start accomplishing in the community. And then we can, of course, we're here to help kind of push along anything that needs to be taken care of. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments, Zayn?
I guess my question is, okay, so we have the study and then we have the potential action plan. What happens next?
So, what happens next is we, we would ask the council kind of take a look at the, what plans they would want to, you know, are interested in pursuing. And we, as CCP, are also trying to pursue some real workforce housing funds to help with development of, 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 of middle, middle-income housing. Government just reauthorized the fund within $1 million. So, CCP is looking at potentially wanting that fund. But again, as a council, we do ask that you take a look at the action plans, see which ones interest you, and we'd be happy to work with you to make those plans be successful.
So, we're not asked to take action at any stage at this point. Potentially down the road, if there's something we wanted to take action on, we would need to pick that from you guys. Yes.
Keep in mind, generally speaking, we're in pretty good shape for it, community. I mean, the, the, the needs that he's identified is basically, I mean, if there is a large subdivision that would go in that would address the specific needs, it would probably take care of most, if not all, of what he's talking about right now. So, we're not that far off from what this study would suggest for our community. It's just a matter of finding those people willing to develop and the people who have the ground, who are willing to develop the ground. So, this is, I mean, I'm not panicked based on this, on this study.
No, I think this study is really great. I believe.
And some of these things too, I mean, like we've talked about apartment living. And they often talk about housing, but housing doesn't always mean houses. Some housing can be apartments, it can be other, you know, rentals as opposed to ownership. So, there's a lot of options out there to try and address these needs. The other thing too is that, you know, we have a pretty symbiotic relationship with Lincoln and Lancaster County. And so, I think sometimes these numbers may get a little skewed just because there are people who are traveling back and forth between the two communities. So, if this develop, if there are opportunities for developments, then absolutely we should look at how we can help facilitate that. But I wouldn't necessarily move heaven and earth at this point to accomplish those things.
And exactly that, to the mayor's point, we have seen substantial, you know, rehabilitation and remodeling of our downtown district. We've got some apartments coming up that are, that are, you know, feeding right into that, that needed demand downtown area. So, it's a, again, natural flow of things. Seward's in a really good spot, as the mayor said, since that if there are opportunities for growth and development, say, for example, the new subdivision in Milford. That was, from my understanding, that was not fully acknowledged at the time in the housing study. Now that it's come out, a lot of the lots have sold up there and that's helping meet their estimated population growth goals. So, again, Seward's in a good spot, but we want to get to the good rates, so.
Great, Zayn.
I'd just note that the study is something we want to keep up to date. That's why we just redid it again. It provides us leverage when we do apply for grand dollars and other things that we can show we have a plan like this. It's going to give you additional points on those grant applications. The other one is as we start working through tackling some of these goals for SCCDP or the county in general, you'll want to think about that in the back of your head as people come in and talk about what potential tools they would like to use to hit some of these marks. They are working at like a workforce type housing, you know, that bottom-end housing level. You see the numbers there, you see where we want to leverage the demand that we need to fill over time. You can kind of juxtapose those two things when people come in and start talking to you about those things.
Yes.
Not to necessarily disagree, but just to make a point, I guess. I don't think we're doing that well on the workforce housing. I do believe that we are great on the housing that's 250 on up. And we've got wonderful builders who will take care of that and that's not going to be a worry for us. But we do need to consider partnerships and some creative financing and whatever else we can do to encourage the growth of that housing in that sweet spot somewhere between 150 and 200, 220. That can, you know, make housing available for some of the workers at Tenneco or elsewhere who may be now living outside the county or at least outside the city because they can't afford a house here. I don't want to, I don't want to disagree with you at all. I just that, to put a finer point on it, that's one area where I think we really do need to do some work.
And that's probably the more challenging area.
Right.
Because most builders are looking at, I can either build a house that I can maybe sell for 180 to 200 and it's a pretty basic home versus the 300 or 400, that's a home that's just more fun.
Well, my thing is you, and what Zayn pointed out about the rehabilitation. You know, we have a lot of housing stocks that could be maybe upgraded a little bit and fit into that range if you have people that will only become invested in some of that rehabilitation.
One of the things too is you can get a domino effect where somebody who, you know, is building a 300 or 400,000 dollar home, but currently lives in a home that would sell on the market between 180 and 200. And I keep tabs on, on the market in Seward on my, on my phone, just not because I'm looking to buy, but just because I like to see what the market looks like. And every once, not a lot, but there's, every once in a while you'll see a, you know, modest home that's in that 180-ish, you know, range, which is about as close as you're going to probably get to, to what you're talking about. So, there are some out there, but, you know, it's just a matter of building that brand new is just difficult. And I've talked with developers about that issue specifically. You know, might be a better chance of building a larger home in Seward and then selling their current house in that, in that range possibly. But we don't want to get too far in the weeds on this unless someone wants to make, build a, give me a building plan right now.
I have a quick question. Out of these 388 homes for rehabilitation or whatever, have they been identified?
From my understanding, from talks with the company who did do the study, they have been identified. And I've been trying to get some of that data, how they identified them homes from them for other communities. So, that's a work in progress.
And is that 388 just here in Seward itself? It's not in the county? It's just here in Seward?
Correct.
And I can add just quickly, they did get the data from the Seward County Assessor. So, they will basically, and you see that on your assessment valuation, you know, basically the, the quality of the home, whatever.
So, at what point do we step up our code enforcement to either not have this number grow or that we put some pressure on it to say, we're looking at that 180 or 96 to 180 range? These are some things that SCCPD is willing to do as far as granting, but you're not reaching these codes and so we need to, where do we go with that?
So, I will say that our, we do have code enforcement going on right now. Of the code enforcement, keep in mind that everyone has probably a different standard of what they think is dilapidated and a different definition that they're using. It sounds like yours is based primarily just on valuation. You know, there are houses that unless we go inside the home, which we, which would require a complaint from someone living there, like a renter, you know, a lot of the issues are on the inside of the house that we just don't, can't see or just kick a door down and go look. You know, some of them are obvious. In some cases, we'll have maybe the gas company might say, hey, we're going to shut off the gas to this house because the foundation's not supporting the gas pipe and it's a safety hazard, in which case then we would move forward and, you know, could notice that it's not, you know, inhabitable. So, we have been working towards that. I'd be curious to actually look at each of these houses, for example, to see what they actually look like because I'm not sure exactly that they necessarily meet the depth of, I mean, if people live there might be surprised.
Right, right.
That their houses in that category. Or the neighbors, just because in some cases, you know, it's just hard to tell from the outside unless there's a structural issue or, or, you know, some serious issues that's easily visible or is complained about. Greg, do you want to add anything else?
No. Currently, we probably have two buildings that would fall under complete dilapidation. And one's in the process of being demolished by the property owner and the other one's in the process. As you noted in our budget discussion, we sure we have budget funds that is probably going to have to be forced, some sort of demolition, whether we order it, pay for it, and go after it. But we have two, even though this identifies 12, I think your other one is just vacancy where you wouldn't know from just driving around, but they're actually just sitting dormant and vacant. I know of some of those as well. And those over time are just, if you're going, if you're not doing anything, it's technically going down. It's not just holding still. So, it's just a factor of time on that one then. So, and that probably falls into some of the other 12. But that's hard when, again, as long as the outside is relatively taken care of, we're not going to get a complaint that's going to get us in there to deal with it. And that's going to be the hard part with trying to, for rehab purposes, the ones that are identified, you got to have willing property owners.
And to Ellen's point earlier about that, that range for affordable housing, you know, there are people that can't afford a lot. And so, they're not necessarily going to complain about conditions. I mean, and whether it's, you know, college kids, back in the day, we were in some college housing that, you know, those houses aren't even there anymore for the reason. We can talk about that later.
Expectations are a lot higher nowadays.
But for, you know, for some people, it's, you know, to get that $300 rent or whatever it may be, it's not going to be a real, you know, fancy place. So, it cuts both ways where if we could go in and, let's say in theory, we eliminate all of those houses in the community, there'd be a lot of people at that one point that probably couldn't afford to live here even either at that point. So, it's sort of a balancing act of enforcement because our main concern is safety as well as aesthetics for the community and overall evaluation. Greg, do you want to add anything else?
Nope.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes. Mr. Zayn? If I may add, yeah.
What else?
So, to build on that, the vacancy point, the study did identify, on page four, you can see a breakdown of the vacancy numbers of those 388 homes. So, there's 388 homes that need a rehabilitation. The study identified 252 homes that are vacant in the community out of a total, a total housing stock of 2,878. So, 252 units in the community are vacant in, in traditional sense. That's vacant for, you know, it's on the market or it's, you know, a vacation home or something along the lines of that.
How did you come up with that number?
That's a number that was, again, used through Kealan, Kealan, the individuals who did this housing study, looked at Assessor information, county assessor information.
It's in power delivery.
And that is a big number. But you look at the adjusted vacancy rate. Adjusted vacancy rate says only 75 homes are unoccupied. Now, difference between housing vacancy rate and adjusted vacancy rate is that the adjusted vacancy rate eliminates homes that are used for vacation homes, migrant housing, you know, migrant farmer housing, homes that are occupied for a certain portion of the year, but the traditional definition are vacant for most of the year. The adjusted vacancy rate takes into account houses that are, you know, in substandard dilapidated conditions, homes that are on the market, homes and, homes that are, you know, rental homes that are on the market but not yet rented.
Does that include a lot of people that go down south everywhere?
Yeah. So, so a total of 75 homes in the community are vacant in the traditional sense. No one's ever been there, it's on the market, which is not livable.
And again, they didn't do a survey of all these houses.
No, no, no.
Nobody called me. Some of this is just, they're putting it through an algorithm that they have and trying to extrapolate that based on age data and all kinds of other inputs. And then they just kind of take the number back out. But that owner vacancy, that, I think that would be a realistic number of 31, adjusted one. There may be 31 actually owner, they're not really, the owner owns them. They're just sitting there dormant. I think that's probably the part more realistic coming.
Thank you for the data. That's great information.
Thanks, Zayn. There's your next question or comments. We'll move on to the next item. Item number three, update on Flex Homes Tax Income Financing Project located at 8 Lincoln Street and plan for phase two. Thomas?
Can you jump on first there, sir?
Go for it.
Thomas Kane approached me and said that now that the, the first of the first of the four phases of the apartment building complex there in North Columbia and Lincoln is complete and we're into the fall season, so he's got full occupancy there. He is ready to move on to what we refer to as phase two. And so, signaling that to me, I did check in with our tip attorney, Andrew Willis. And Andrew said, the only requirements are is that we go back at this point and just make an adjustment. It really only needs to happen at the CRA level. But we remember during the public discussions and everything else, then we also wanted to make sure that we came back to the council and kind of just did a check and then to find out what you're comfortable with. There are no other public hearings that are required at this point or anything else. But we want to update you on where Thomas is at, that he's moving forward with the second phase. And then ask if you just want to feel like this discussion is sufficient or if we should do the formal approval of the CRA document. If you have it there, then bring it back to council again. So, it's really a formality. We thought, well, we'll just forward it off on the front end and then see what you want to do. Leave it at your hands. Thomas is here tonight. He can kind of give you an update on, on what's going on and then what his plan is moving forward. Thomas?
Yep. So, I guess thanks first of all for your guys' support on the first phase. It was a success. And so, we're now moving on to the second phase. And really, the only difference on the second phase will be that we will have less bedrooms and so, we'll have more two-style type bedrooms than four-style. And so, that's not the only difference. Otherwise, the look and feel will be the exact same as the first phase. It'll actually be added on, directly on to the first phase. And so, basically, we're just here to make sure you guys are happy with the end product and continue on.
Thanks, Tom.
Thomas, can you explain why you are making the adjustment from four to two?
Basically, just there seems to be more demand for. Basically just, there seems to be more demand for two bedrooms, one bath type housing for apartments rather than four bedroom, two baths, so.
That's a thought in the housing study.
Yeah, I mean, he learned it firsthand by how quick he moved units in the first phase. And so you see where the debate is now. We had a long discussion about it, so.
Thomas, is this still primarily student housing, or what kind of housing do we have going on? I guess what's your current occupancy? Is it all students, or what do you have going?
So eleven out of the twelve are students, correct, yep. And one is a family that is currently building and they sold their house and so they need to place it temporarily, but.
Did you have more demand than you had rooms?
I, I mean, I'm pretty confident if I had another building full of two veterans, I probably would have built it, yep. The four veterans took a little bit more time. But yeah, I'm pretty confident, I would have another building, two veterans, built it and pulled.
When do you hope to break ground, project start coming forward or something?
Well, currently my architect's doing some changes to the documents, because we have, again, we're shortening the buil, the building up a little bit. You know, changing the footprint just a little bit from changing for the four bedrooms to the two bedrooms. And so I should have that back in October and then hopefully we'll be able to start, you know, late fall, early winter, depending on how the winter goes. But if we can get concrete in the ground, that's, that's what the plan is right now, so.
Kevin, you have any recommendations on how to handle the whole process of work? I refer to Andrew Willis on that.
Andrew said it's completely up to your choice. I think I left it up. And so if you feel up to date, you don't feel that there's aesthetic, because remember we talked about the aesthetic, how the growth and things like that. If you don't feel that there's any, he's not building anything different than what he contemplated before, other than the adjustment he mentioned on the number of units and how they lay out. We can just take it back to CRA, have them approve it, he's off and running for the next phase. Otherwise it'll go back to CRA and then come here again for just another meeting like this, but with a formal motion to approve the immediate agreement. No public hearings, anything like that, if you'd like.
I think you're a good enough. Do you need a motion?
Let's go ahead and make a motion, just so we can track it and enter the document.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve, to just have it here for CRA.
Second? Your motion and a second. Is there a good discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
May I?
Yes.
Kendrick?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Item four, approves specification, plans and cost estimate for the alcohol relocation project and authorized the de-advantage for this.
Okay, what I have before you is just a select couple of pages from the project documents. Now there are five pages from the plan set and the cost estimate is on a eight and a half by eleven sheet. There's also a project manual, a couple hundred pages of specifications and contract requirements. So essentially this project is for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. This is an initial project to redirect the wastewater final effluent that goes to the receiving water body, currently Plum Creek, redirecting it over to the Big Blue. And so the advantage there is the Big Blue is a much larger water body. It can assimilate a lot more pollutants that remain. We don't clarify the water, we clean it to a certain standard. Primarily the components of interest are biochemical oxygen demand. It's a measure of the strength of the wastewater in terms of organic strength, that remains. There's ammonia and there's suspended solids, which is just a measure of the solid material remaining in the effluent. And so this project precedes the entire wastewater treatment plant upgrade. What it does allow is it allows a lot more discharge until that larger upgrade of the entire wastewater treatment plant can be accomplished. And so this is directed at the growth of the city. And we've reached essentially the limit of the current wastewater treatment plant to actually treat the waste. And of course, we continue to grow, we have new industrial components with us. Most critical time of the year is late March and early April. The limits revert to a much more stringent standard for springs, for the spring even more stringent for summertime, yet the water is still cold. This effluent is generally treated secondarily biologically. So we rely upon microorganisms and they're slower growing in colder water. And so the time of the year we're most critical to not meeting the state imposed treatment limits for discharge is late March and early April. And so this project is quite timely. So what it will be is expanding both the capacity as well as redirecting that flow. And so essentially from the existing ultraviolet disinfection facility building, the effluent currently goes south for two square feet and then turns to the southeast and discharges in Pine Creek. In this case here, that will be rebuilt, the new thirty-inch pipeline, replacing a current twenty-four inch. It'll head south to roughly the tree line, and this is city-owned property, and then it'll turn west and go directly across the farm field where we have a twenty-foot permanent easement, as well as a sixty-foot temporary easement to do the construction, and then discharge into the Big Blue. So of the few figures that I have, I've got the title sheet. If you look one sheet behind that, there's two major components, one on either end. These are pretty, these back to back. The first one, you see on the right-hand side, is what's known as a partial effluent. It's a way of measuring the effluent flow quite accurately with an open channel. And really what it does, quite simple, takes subcritical flow, which is meandering flow, typical flow that you would see, and that creates shooting flow. And in between subcritical and critical is, supercritical flow is critical. You measure the level at that point, the level, it's, the critical flow is proportional to the entire flow rate. So with an easy level measurement, you know how much is discharged. It's very common, very maintenance-free way of measuring the effluent quite accurately. Widely adopted by wastewater treatment facilities across the United States. There is an existing one, the problem is, is that it is set too low and it tends to flood. And when, of course, that level is disruptive and you can't measure it. So the current partial effluent is really unusable because you can't use it on a regular basis. The next page is the opposite end of the project, concrete head wall. And so with that pipeline, there'll be about eight hundred and fifty feet of thirty-inch pipe connecting these two ends. And then there'll be a concrete structure. It'll have a rubber check valve that's set inside the end of the pipe. It'll have this concrete end wall, very similar to any end wall storm sewer pipe. We see evident elsewhere discharging storm sewer. It'll have a trash rack atop it, the concrete will be surrounded by riprap to protect it. It'll be essentially formed to the slope of the bank of the river. And so at that portion, this is just downstream of a bend in the Big Blue. A little unknown as to what debris may build up on that, so rather conservative in terms of designing with the check valve inside the pipe and trash rack on top. The last two pages show roughly the routing of that line from the wastewater plant out to the Big Blue River. The last sheet that I'll talk about is the engineering cost estimate that goes along with it. Somewhat hard to read on your laptops here and you can look through, there's quite a few wide items here. The final price, including a ten percent contingency, is just under three hundred thousand dollars. On the back side, we're considering alternative materials, more durable materials. So the base bid is based upon ductile iron pipe. It's a very commonly used, very durable pipe, as well as being very economical. We're looking at the PVC pipe, VCP is vitro clay. The city uses quite a bit of clay pipe, and the sewer system has over time. Very long-lasting, probably has the longest life of all these materials. And then alternative C is a more modern polymer fiberglass pipe that's centrifugally cast. And so with that, we'll try to look at the best balance between life expectancy and, and cost in that bid. I will say that the bidding climate currently is, is quite unstable. There's, there's a lot of work in the eastern half of Nebraska for the utility contractors that are out there. Engineers are very often the low bidder in the process. There, thereby meaning that all bids received, qualified bids are generally substantially higher. So I would, I would expect that we might see, just depending, maybe we'll see a price in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand. We might see as high as four hundred thousand, even higher. It's really unknown at this time, it just depends on how the project fits. It's a well-designed project, this is by Short Elliott Hendrickson, SEH, Jake Bosch's new firm. I've known them for my entire career, they do a good job. It's a well-defined project, so that should increase the interest of bidders as well as hopefully come up with very competitive bids, not having a lot of fun levels. So with that, we're just asking for approval to move forward, advertise this project for bid, and move on to the next step.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
We'd be tempted well above, knowing that we're in this rocky climate.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
From a budgetary standpoint, when we put this in the budget, we accounted for the rocky climate we have as far as?
We, we did as well as we could, but, but we're continually surprised. So I think we can easily, Greg, you perhaps can speak to this, absorb the increase. But I think when the bids come in, we'd have to evaluate.
You're gonna have to make an evaluation, depending on how it comes out. You, you may have to say, well, we might re-bid this as an odd one. Which, we don't want to delay this, but at the same time, we don't want to take the cake, so.
I reckon they make a motion to go to bid.
Motion second to approve, is there a second? Is there a second? Line up for discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Kendrick?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Wilkens?
Yes.
Thank you. Item five, ordinance admitting the comprehensive pay plan applying for a one percent cost of living adjustment for all pay lines. Greg?
Yes, pursuant to the budget that will essentially be finalized tonight, but that was recommended and moved at our last meeting and public hearing. One of the recommended changes the council made was going from that zero percent cost of living adjustment to a one percent cost of living adjustment. In doing so, we set all of our pay lines and salaries by ordinance. And so part of the process of adjusting for the COLA for October first is to pass this ordinance. So that's what we see for you here tonight.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions or comments from the council?
So this is for the whole pay line, not just for the current level that the employees are at, correct?
Correct.
So anybody that would be at zero is getting a one percent raise, even though they're not at a zero right now. We're basically raising the bottom or entrance for all wages.
All wages will go up one percent across the board. Again, you'll adjust the tops and the bottoms and then we'll reslide the scale. There'll be adjustments in the middle and everyone will stay at the same pay lines they're at. So if you're at a six on our pay scale, you'll stay at a six. The adjustment will just slide it up.
Any other questions or comments? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to provide for annual classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska to provide for a one percent cost of living adjustment, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date such that classification and pay ranges of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Kendrick?
No.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Wilkens?
Yeah.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and read?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is your ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen be finally passed and adopted. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Kendrick?
No.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Yon?
No.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Wilkens?
Yes.
Item number six, ordinance admitting the municipal code initiating an electric rate adjustment, increasing total system revenue by three percent, effective with the October twenty twenty billing. Greg?
Yep. As always or usual with our ordinance amending utility rates, we take our utility information and ordinance back to us, NMP. And they help us adjust the rates to ensure that you're generating a three percent revenue increase. And so you see the proposed one, essentially user fees go down a proportional percentage and then the, or the user fees go up and then the use rate, so your use rate goes down slightly. We did run some adjustment numbers, Bonnie assisted with this, did a great job. We just looked at an average home, annual increase, and when this is electric, would be forty-eight dollars a year, proximal, a residential home. And then when we consider one, that one as well. But again, the traditional standard is to generate the revenue, you need to cover operations and maintenance. They adjust the user fee and then draw down the usage fee, so your usage amount is less.
We did a comparability with other cities our size to see where we're.
In your budget, we do it every year and in your budget, no, I did attach rates that show where we are. Again, we're kind of all over the board, but out of, I think, the hundred and sixty communities that NMP surveys, we go anywhere from fiftieth lowest, all the way down to some rates, we're the eleventh lowest on electric. Just depends on what power usage you're at, commercial versus residential. But we're, I don't think anywhere above the fiftieth percent percent at this point anymore. And so we've been doing zeros for a couple of years. Last year we did a one and a half. This year would be recommended to refish on the budget.
Any other questions or comments? An ordinance to amend sections two thirty-seven dash three point one through two thirty-seven dash three point one-three of the municipal code to initiate an electric rate adjustment that will increase total system revenues generated by rates charged to customers for services from the electric distribution system of the city by three percent, effective with the October twenty twenty billing, to provide for billing thereof, to repeal the original sections two thirty-seven dash three point one through two thirty-seven dash three point one-three, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title, it is designated as ordinance number twenty twenty dash nineteen. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Kendrick?
No.
Singleton?
No.
Yon?
Yes.
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Olderman?
Yes.
Welkin?
Yes.
Is, is ordinance number...
Wait, was that, was that three quarters? No. But that, that was your motion to suspend the pre-reading, which requires three quarters.
Okay.
What does that mean?
That means it doesn't move forward and we get to do it every week.
Means you have to read it again at the next...
So move on to number seven.
Yep.
What's, what's the, uh, Roberts rules to...
We can reconsider it. Kelly, I'll defer to you.
Someone to, yes, someone to make a motion reconsider.
To take a motion, be...
It has to be one of those.
On the losing side, you're president.
Yep. It would be one of those two.
Would either one of you want to reconsider that vote? Was the vision...
No, maybe not.
Okay, so, um, essentially table six, moving on to number seven. So ordinance admitting the municipal code initiating a sewer rate adjustment, increasing total system revenues by three percent effective with the October twenty twenty billing. Greg?
Yes, this is an ordinance to pursuant to the budget, uh, amend sewer rates adjusting to three percent. Same thing, adjusting the user, the use rate down, user fee up to guarantee that your revenues actually can increase because all of these electrical water, again, even your wastewater is based on your water usage, just measured out in winter. Um, so this is an adjustment to ensure that you generate three percent revenue as projected in your budget. I think we had it increased last year. Annual increase for an average residential home, based on our numbers in Bonnie and Lys work looking at this, would be thirteen dollars eighty-four cents.
Question or comments, Greg?
How many people right now are having a problem paying their bills?
You need to define what is a problem.
I'm just saying with the COVID nineteen and people out of work right now, how many people are having problems paying their utility bills?
I think we're at an average for what we've been after years in regards to the people that are late on their bills. And I don't know that we've had, uh, any shut-offs that are above and beyond normal, what we, before COVID.
There's also a lot of assistance programs available for people to apply if they do have a problem.
And I don't think the usage of that even at this point is above and beyond normal anymore in regards to number of, because we see those deposits coming to those entities. So from the state or the faith-based community nonprofits.
Any questions or comments? Want to ask someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.